All right, I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville for Tuesday, December 12, 2017, and we'll start with roll call.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
Tom Knoll has been excused. Catherine Westeby.
Here.
Barbara Doss.
Here.
Don Francis.
Here.
Barbara Stockhausen.
Here.
And Ken Killian.
Here.
All right, first item this evening is a public hearing. We actually have two, and the first one is the Americans with Disability Act Complementary Paratransit Plan.
Yes. Good evening, thank you. This is a Wisconsin DOT requirement. Now that we have what they call a fixed route bus service, we're required to have an ADA complementary paratransit plan. What this is, is it's to identify the procedures whereby folks who are unable to use the bus because of its fixed route and fixed route capabilities can get an equivalent level of service. We have had our shared ride taxi for well over 30 years, and so what this plan does is it allows us to use that shared ride taxi service as our complementary paratransit It's mostly boilerplate from the DOT, there's very little variance, but because of working with the DOT, it works with our shared ride taxi service. The biggest issue is that there are additional reporting requirements for the shared ride taxi, and that was the reason why we had to go to a bid for those services, because those were not included in the previous bid. So what we're asking right now is that we do the formal public hearing request for any comments, and hopefully you will pass this plan.
Questions for... All right, according to our public hearing protocol, the next item would be public statements in favor. Against. Checking here because I did have the bus contract, but I think that...
Council President, you're going to have to move your microphone closer.
Oh, I'm sorry, right. I forgot to mention to everybody, please speak directly into the microphone. Red light comes on, you know it's working. Public statements in favor, public statements against, or public statements in general. Council discussion? Seen this before, uninformation, so is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion in the second. Move.
Nichols.
Yes.
Westeby.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Stockhausen.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Common Council action?
I move to adopt the ADA complementary paratransit plan as presented.
A second.
A motion in a second, and we'll vote.
Nichols.
Yes.
Westeby.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Stockhausen.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is also a public hearing, Community Development Block Grant, the former Pioneer Ford Redevelopment Project. Joe?
Yes, as you're aware, the city did receive a grant, a community development block grant to assist with our Pioneer Ford Redevelopment Project. Specifically, we got a grant of up to $500,000 to assist with the property acquisition costs, and then as part of the city's match for that, we have to cover the costs for environmental analysis, remediation, site clearance as part of that project. And there's some, a lot of strings that come with the CDBG grant, but one of those is a requirement that you hold public hearings throughout the project, actually one before we apply, then one at the beginning of the project, and then one towards the end of the project. And kind of one of the primary reasons for requiring that grant is they like to take that as an opportunity to provide information on the community development block grant program, as how it works, how it operates, the intent of that, and then also give people an opportunity to speak about the project specifically for your community. So as far as the overall CDBG program, basically it was, there's kind of three national objectives that they use to determine what projects receive funding, and it's kind of the overall goals that guide the program itself. The first one is to provide decent housing, the second one is to provide suitable living environments, and the third one is to expand economic opportunities principally for persons of low and moderate income. And then to help achieve those overall goals, they kind of define some more defined national objectives, and these are the criteria that you have to meet, one of these criteria to get the grant, and the object is that your project will help achieve one of those objectives. So there's three of those, to provide benefits to low and moderate income persons, to aid in the prevention or elimination of slums or blighted areas, and to provide funding for projects that have a particular urgency due to existing conditions which pose a serious and immediate threat to the health or welfare of the community. For our project, we applied under the prevention or elimination of slums or blighted areas. If you recall, we did a study many years ago when we formed the downtown Tiff District that determined that property met the definition of slum or blighted area, so we applied under that. And it also so happens that the project as proposed would also provide housing, which is one of the national objectives, and also specifically housing for low to moderate income. And so the proposed project meets several of those criteria. So as I mentioned, you're required to hold this public hearing to provide this opportunity, or this information to the public, and also provide opportunities for people to comment, but there's actually no action that's required. Questions?
Questions?
No, I don't have a question, but I did see in the audience people shaking their head when we talked about slum or blighted property. Joe, the definition of blighted and/or slum property by the federal and state government is probably different than what we would ordinarily think of when we think of those words, is it not?
Yeah, and actually, there's probably a majority, if I recall, of the downtown area meets that definition. When you've got properties that, for instance, typical of an old downtown, you've got properties built right up to the lot line, there's no parking provided on site, for example, they don't have buildings that meet the handicapped accessibility requirements of current codes, you don't have, you have buildings that don't meet, you know, other safety requirements of the current codes.
And those are called blighted, or slum.
So that, you know, you've got example of buildings that are very narrow and very deep, that don't meet the retail requirements of modern day businesses, that type of thing. So it's, it's a very broad, all-inclusive kind of a definition that they use for this type of a project.
But, in fact, when we think of those words, we would not necessarily think of the things that you described, we would think of perhaps...
It doesn't have to be buildings that are falling down and...
Right, or the windows broken, or things like that.
That would certainly qualify, but that's not a requirement.
That's not a requirement, all right. I just wanted to clear that up for... Okay?
All right, next is public statements in favor. Public statements against, I have one person to speak. Gary Prohaska.
I live at 280 Division Street here in Platteville. My apology, when I checked that, it was, I was planning on speaking just for information, not against. One of the things I was concerned about was the definition of derelict and slum, thank you for bringing that up, I appreciate that. There is, that is a loose term that's used for demolition of buildings and things like that. But anyway, I want to draw your attention to being physically responsible for both our physical assets and monetary money that's held by the city, and I know you try to do that, but buildings on property have an intrinsic value above the value of the land, and if citizens take a look at their taxes, the land is a small percentage of the assessed value that would pay on taxes. And of course, that goes into general fund to keep the city operating. My concern is not squandering these assets, but making them work for all citizens of Platteville. All development is not beneficial to the city's inhabitants, and in my opinion, the city has kind of overextended itself on a lot of issues. I know I went to a meeting not that long ago, and the city manager is showing the loss of tax revenue that's happened, well, to point two things out, both Menards and Walmart. And so the city is feeling that crunch, and it's not the fault of the city that we're feeling this crunch, but I feel that the developer agreement had been opened up to change the date for purchase, and I'd like to see some protection of the city that should also be added. I know the developer at that time had shown that there was a problem with capital for this project, and they're looking for additional assets to make this project happen. And the city has determined that there was an extension was in order for the addition of time to acquire these funds, and I'm not totally against that either. And in the meantime, the city has moved forward the demolition of the physical assets that we have. If I had a piece of property and somebody offered me money for, let's say, my house because of a beautiful view, but they didn't want the building, and they tore, I tore the building down so that they could build on it, and then they choose not to, not to build, I have a real problem with that, because the city is going to lose that asset in the hopes that funding could become available in the future. And I request an addition to be added to the developer agreement, that the value of the buildings that are removed be paid back to the city if the developer backs out. If the developer is a sure thing, as Platteville's led to believe, and that the city is in love with this plan that we now have, there's no cost to the developer if he complies. So in other words, if he builds this project, and it meets all the criteria and everything else, that's great, but we have to take a look at the original proposal presented too, and accepted by the city, and this stated that there was going to be a remodel and reuse of the Gates Hotel on site. That's an incredibly historic building, both to the City of Platteville, as also to the state, and also the territory. And two to form, this followed two to form until the end of last year, when it was determined that it wasn't, wasn't wanted. We're not getting that approved plan development. Another cost has, the city have paid to make this happen, purchase alone, yes, we did receive $500,000 for a block grant to purchase the property to improve the site, and the city, to my understanding, came up with $482,000 out of, well, the citizens' funds. And of course, we've pretty well shut down the art gallery, and the senior citizen has taken a hot hit, and I know we've had that process that's ongoing to try and recap some of this funding that we've lost. I think the city is desperate to make something happen, but what a cost to the city and our citizens, and what a sweet deal. This could come for the developers, and how many years does the city have to wait? And in meantime, the city loses a large piece of history that will not be able to be replaced. So in my opinion, the block grant is a really wonderful tool, and the Tiff zones can be a really wonderful tool, but I think we're getting overextended. And my concern is that it's not just for the developers or anything like that, but it's also for the Platteville citizens that bear the cost on their taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say that we have spent about a year, I think at least, discussing this project, Gary, and we have a developer's agreement that is being finalized, and we have a block grant that we applied for and received, and this is in a Tiff district, so I think that we've answered most of the concerns that you had. I understand your disappointment about the Gates Hotel, but I will also recognize that the city went to great lengths to try to resolve that issue. That was settled, I think, at the last meeting, and we have some information yet on that too, so... Decision on the actual date of the building. But I, you know, I appreciate your comments, but I think that, I think the council also and the city staff deserves a lot of credit for the due diligence that they have done for this project, and I think it will be a great benefit to the city when it's finished. And I do believe... All right. Any council discussion?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion in a second. Move.
Nichols.
Yes.
Westeby.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Stockhausen.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So you said we don't need any action on this, is that correct?
Correct.
Just that we acknowledge that we've redone the... All right, next item, consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on the single motion and vote due to their routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer a separate discussion and action. First is council minutes from our November 28, 2017 regular meeting. B is payment of bills. C is financial report for November. D is appointments to boards and commissions. I don't have any this evening, but we do have on various boards and commissions, and you can find information on our website, platteville.org. We'd love to have citizen involvement on those boards, we need citizen involvement on those boards, so please don't be shy about volunteering. Licenses, change of agent, parking space LLC, Platteville, Christopher L. Meyer, agent for premises at 1621 Progressive Parkway, the Parkway Grill. Also in the packet, one-year and two-year operator to sell and serve alcohol licenses and taxi and taxi drivers. Next is Resolution 1725, appointing pole workers for the 2018-2019 cycle. Resolution 1726, appointment of city assessor for 2018. And H is an amended OE gray lease for the senior center. Consent calendar.
Move to accept the consent calendar.
Second.
I have a few questions about the senior center lease agreement. I could ask them right now.
Go ahead.
Okay, my first one, excuse me, is the cost is going to be $760 per month, and does the city pay any of that, or is that all going to be paid by the senior center?
Just a correction, the senior center is a city entity, but it will not be paid by the senior center or the city, it'll be paid by PAS, the nonprofit organization that is doing fundraising on behalf of the senior center.
Will be paid by fundraising.
Correct.
What are special events? I'm looking at under the rental agreement, it is understood that, and this is number three, special events scheduled for the gym need to be scheduled in advance at normal gym rates. What are special events for the senior center picnic?
It could be an example of a picnic, although that may, so they've basically kind of given us permission to use the facility for kind of some day-to-day, so the gym space for day-to-day use. So, for example, there's currently pickleball being played there, there's currently yoga being done in that facility, and they're not considering that a special event or requiring additional fees for that. At this point, there are no special events that are planned there, but, you know, if we wanted to do some type of community public art fair or something like that, might be an example of a special event.
And number seven, a tenant shall carry comprehensive public liability insurance. Is that being paid also by PAS?
I do not believe so.
One million slash five million bodily injury, 250,000 property damage, who pays?
I believe that's included in the city's coverage, but again, that's, that's not the change here, that's already been signed and approved, the change is specific to the additional space that they're requesting. They're looking to request the additional storage space off of the gym, half of that space, that's the change that we're, we're looking to...
Yes, I understand that, I was just asking about number 11, who's paying for the insurance?
I believe it is covered under the city's insurance.
City? Okay, and my last question is under number 15, says this agreement contains the option to renew for one or two years following the expiration of this term, and the term is 19 months. So agreement, is this going to be one or two years at a time?
Yes.
Not a continuous rollover?
I think we would be open to that, but the, this school district is requiring all of their tenants to sign agreements like this. In fact, I think we are the only tenant that has a two-year lease versus a one-year lease.
We have 19 months, the first one.
Since it's been prorated.
And the future is going to be one or two years.
Two years, like, like the last one, this one's now in the process, since we're resigning it, it's, it's 19.
Okay, so it's the school district that's buying that part?
Correct. Originally, I believe it was a one-year lease, and we requested it to be slightly longer, just to give us a little more assurance there.
I was, what I'm getting at is, I wouldn't like to see them out of space.
Of course. Bye.
Because it's only one or two years. Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second, and we'll vote.
Nichols.
Yes.
Westeby.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Stockhausen.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any, and the city manager is asked to speak this evening.
And I'd like to ask Jan Martin and Mr. Brian McGod to join me up here. Jan will do a little city clerk business on her way up. I'm not going to speak a whole lot tonight, so, but I wanted to make sure we got you both on camera, slide over. We have two employees here that have served 29 years and nine years respectively, the City of Platteville. As a new city manager, I relied on both these individuals extensively when I started. People may not realize this, but it takes a village to manage a city council and a city manager, and council members change, city managers change, but these are the folks that are consistent throughout the tenure, that are sort of the elders of our organization, that carry a lot of knowledge and structure, and they're really the people that make sure that the wheels of democracy turn as they're supposed to. They keep us in line with all the rules and, the rules that are set by the state and other governing entities. And so it was really hard for me to say goodbye to these two folks, because I feel like I've got two training wheels that are about to fall off, but, but I just wanted to make sure that we did acknowledge them. And I have for Jan, we're going to have a big party Thursday, but this is just, this is just the introduction, but if we could give them a round of applause.
And this is your chance to say something, if you'd like to.
Oh, yeah.
Brian, Jan.
I want to thank everybody for the, the time that I've been city attorney, I've really enjoyed my work, it's been, of all the things I've done practicing law, and I started out in doing criminal law and defending, defending those kind of folks for years, and then bankruptcies, and on and on, I've changed my focus and over the years, and the most rewarding and the most important things that I've done has been city attorney for Platteville, and so I thank you all for the added opportunity, and I've really, really enjoyed it, so thank you.
I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to work here, it's been great, everybody I work with is great, and it's been such a rewarding career for me, so, thank you.
And with, with every transition, there comes an opportunity, and so with that, I'd like to introduce Candace Cook, our new city clerk, and Candace, I don't know if you want to come up and say a few words about yourself? Sort of, maybe? I should have prepped her for this, I didn't.
Hello, I'm Candace Cook, some of you may recognize me, I have worked with the City of Platteville for the last four and a half years as a police officer. I am very happy for this opportunity, I'm very excited for this opportunity, so I'm just looking forward to the future, so thank you very much.
On behalf of the council, Brian and Jan, thank you very much, you two were instrumental, that's for sure, in everything that we do. All right, those are the, ah, we have one other person who's asked under citizens' comments, observations, Lori Urshin? Bar?
It's been a long time since I've spoke in front of the council.
Lori, I apologize, I should have asked you, just for our records, we always ask for your name and your address.
Okay, this is Lori Urshin Bar from Platteville, Wisconsin. My family and I, for the new members on the council, actually lived on Main Street, Platteville, for many years, the kids actually grew up on Main Street, so Main Street became really a heart of my, my family. We moved outside of Platteville about 11 years ago, rural Platteville, and just really enjoy this area tremendously. What I have come up with, a while back, I saw this billboard outside of Platteville, it said, "Thank, Make Happen." Any of you see that billboard? Well, I got thinking to myself with all the issues going on in this world these days. You can see that I have been working on kindling kindness and people inspiring people. These balls are floating around town, I don't know if you have seen them yet. Also, the Grant County Economic Development Meeting, Eileen, you, you saw a couple? Okay, well, the ball is adorned with Wisconsin greenery, and of course, made here in Platteville, which is awesome, and the pine cones are picked up out in the woods. It has a penny on the ball, and the penny represents, you know, if you go someplace and you pick up a penny, what do you do? A lot of times, a lot of people make a wish, right? Well, there are some people that actually say a prayer, and so that penny can represent whatever the person actually wishes to do. Also, you will see an inspirational note, and this one says, and it refers to what Karen just said, opportunities don't just happen, you create them, right? So it's pretty awesome. Also, you'll see that there is an American flag, which is great for Platteville, because we are pretty patriotic, and, and you can see our logo at the bottom hanging, kindling kindness, people inspiring people, miracles happen, and isn't that the truth? So what I'm going to do is gift this to Platteville. Eileen Nichols, I'm sure you'll know where to put it. And the parking issue is definitely has been a part of my heart in the past, so if there's any questions, I just encourage you to come into the shop and talk to me, I'd rather do it that way. So thank you for letting me speak, and this is for Platteville.
Thank you very much, Lori. Right, those are the only citizens' comments, observations, and petitions that I've had, so we will go on to the reports in our packet. City Attorney itemized statement for November, the Water and Sewer Financial Report for November, also the Airport Financial Report, and Department Progress Reports. Questions or comments on any of those? and department progress reports. Questions or comments on any of those? Right. Hearing none, we'll go on to our action item. The first is ordinance seventeen fifteen, amending the official traffic map downtown parking.
Good evening. Thank you very much. The first item is for downtown parking, all except Bailey Avenue. We had a very lengthy process with downtown parking task force and with public comments and other items here. And the parking task force recommends approval of the following items. First is reconfiguring the Mineral Street parking lot. It will change the aisle orientation from north-south to east-west. It'll keep the same number of stalls through the narrowing of some of the stalls. It will decrease conflict points between vehicles and pedestrians. There would be fourteen stalls eligible for leased parking, should the council so choose, along the Mineral Street side of the lot. All the remaining stalls and any unleased stalls shall have the designation of no parking 3:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. And this approval does not require an ordinance. The other items on here do. The next one is to consolidate timed parking. Anything that's less than one-hour parking in downtown, we've currently got three categories. We would consolidate that to fifteen-minute parking stalls only. And then, right now, we have either two-hour, three-hour, or four-hour parking stalls at different locations in the downtown. We want to consolidate that to be the three-hour parking, 9:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., no parking, 3:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. Third item was to convert the parking on the west side of Bonson Street. Currently, it's signed as parking for city business only, and revert that to three-hour parking, 9:00 a.m. to 5:30, and no parking 3:00 to 6:00 a.m. to match with most of the rest of downtown. It impacts five parking stalls next to City Park. The next item would be to convert parking on the south side of Mineral Street, between Third and Fourth Street, from four-hour parking to no parking 3:00 to 6:00 a.m. This would make that section of on-street parking the same as the parking in the adjacent Mineral Street lot. The last item would be to convert the entire block of South Elm Street, between Pine and Main Street, to three-hour parking, 9:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., no parking 3:00 to 6:00 a.m. That would include the street parking and the parking in those ninety-degree parking stalls next to the new library. That would fit with the rest of the downtown. So, staff is recommending that you approve the reconfiguration of the parking lot and pass the enclosed ordinance making the other changes.
Questions, anyone?
Number one, reconfigure Mineral Street parking lot. Is that the one you discussed? I looked at that the other day. And Howard, did we get a design for that? Did I miss that someplace? I was curious as to the amount of curb put in there. I believe in a minimum of curb installation because that is something else to pile snow around.
There was never to be any curb on the interior of the lot. It would only be curbing along the exterior to direct stormwater. The plan includes fencing, similar to the fencing along the Pine Street parking lot behind the post office, along the Mineral Street side, and between where the stalls would be on the Third Street side. But the plan was not to have curbing in the interior of the lot.
It'll be around the outside. That's correct?
Well, there's currently curbing, for example, on the side next to the one building here on Fourth Street. And there's some curbing along the south side between our lot and the paved areas behind the businesses. And those, we would be replacing.
Questions from the council? Otherwise, we do have some people who have asked to speak. Right, Dave Spensley?
Howard, did we make some of these changes from the last conversation we had with people from the public? Were any changes?
There weren't any changes made since last meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. If we give your name and address, please.
Dave Spensley. My wife, Margie, and I own the Bridle Boutique property on Main Street here in Platteville. I spoke a couple weeks ago about the reconfiguration and the leased parking. And Margie and I put together a letter, which we sent to all the council members. And I hope you had a chance to read it. And Margie's been very busy since this last meeting with that letter. She has went around all the downtown businesses. And when the time of the letter was written, she'd collected forty-three signatures. And at this time, she has seventy-five signatures, saying that the letter that she wrote to you, that they all got a copy, read it, and were in agreement with what she had written. "I hope you all got a chance to drive into the lot and take a look around. Ken, I think maybe you did. That's good. I'm here to talk about the reconfiguration you're proposing and the leased parking stalls you're proposing over the twenty-four-hour stalls you already have." The first thing, supposedly, the reconfiguration of the Mineral Street lot is about the safety of backing out of eleven stalls onto Third Street. Margie and I met with Howard and Karen, and they feel that these eleven stalls are unsafe. But we are not aware of any accident history or problems with this. In the letter that Margie wrote to you, there are five stalls on the west side of the new library that back out onto Elm Street at a much busier street and intersection than Third Street is. If this was acceptable at a newly designed lot, then it should be fine to leave it the same, the Mineral Street lot. The layout of the new design of the reconfiguration is very tight and has a lot of bottleneck corners in it, as far as parking. Plus, snow removal will not be near as easy as it is now. The new proposal's shrinking the size of the parking stalls from ten-foot wide to some of them nine, some of them nine-and-a-half foot wide, and you're only gaining one stall. This is just not sensible or cost-efficient. It will take a lot more money to redesign this lot than to just resurface it, which Margie and I approached you about in the first place. Why spend more money than you need to create a less feasible parking lot? The existing lot has a very functional layout. There is not a safety issue, and using the thirty-foot street as an entry point is a great advantage. As I said before, Margie went up and down Main Street, got over seventy-five business opinions. The consensus is that the parking lot should be left the same as it is now, and no more leased parking. Let's get out of the leased parking business and go back to twenty-four or forty-eight hour. And please take the signs down on the ones that aren't being leased, so someone can park there. I said at your last meeting, leased parking and downtown retail just don't belong in the same sentence. You know, we went through this downtown parking discussion in 2012, when the city wanted to sell the Bonson Street parking lot to a developer for an apartment building. We don't want you to think of us as complainers. We are just trying to keep our independent small businesses on Main Street thriving. We need all the help we can get to make parking and shopping appealing in the downtown Platteville area. I received a copy of the email that you folks received from Mike Olds, representing the law firm of Cocke-Winkegan. I think he expresses how we all feel, and they object very strongly to the reconfiguration that you are proposing. We feel this email was very well-written, and also says how we all feel. And I do want to thank you all for your service on the city council, because I know sometimes there's tough decisions. But we do appreciate your time spent. Thank you.
I also have Nick Pease like to speak against.
First of all, I'd like to... Oh, Nick Pease. I live here in Platteville, 915 Eastman Street. I own Nick's Bar downtown. First of all, I'd like to thank the city council. You guys have worked with me for some city events. Always very personal, very good people that I've dealt with. I'd like to start with that. I want to continue to do things downtown to help grow downtown businesses and to get people to come to Platteville. That being said, I was on the parking commission. I went to probably about four or five meetings. I sat through a meeting in which I kind of felt like nothing was gonna get done this year. There was some financial stuff, and then I just kind of went, okay, well, it took place when I was working. So, I should have been more hands-on with it. I wasn't aware of what was going to happen. With that being said, the layout for the parking lot seems kind of redundant in the fact that why wouldn't we leave it the same, so we can keep things flowing the way they are? I do a Derby Days event every year. It works out marvelously. The wide-open layout, the way things are set, you put curbing, put fencing in, things of that nature, it changes that event. It doesn't make it any easier for people to use. Also, I looked out the window today when I walked in. We've got this going on downstairs. People have parked quite a ways away. You want to take away fourteen spots for leased stalls, is roughly what you're... Not leased stalls, but yes, for leased stalls. Is that... I mean, is that correct? Is it fourteen stalls? So, you want to take away fourteen stalls. So, now, the plan is to lease these stalls. And you can say, well, we're gonna let people park in them from 3:00 to 6:00 if they're not leased. Well, the goal for the city is to lease the stalls. So, you've got this going on downstairs with all these people. And I want to continue to do events here and continue to do things with City Hall. But if you're taking away parking stalls, it becomes difficult for me to do these things, to make it easy for people to come in and park. And my patrons and people that come to visit, you know, college students, they park downtown, they lose those spots. I mean, people want to be responsible, but we need to give them an opportunity to be. That being said, I hope that kind of made sense, and I didn't ramble too much. But thanks again for letting me talk.
Thank you. The other person is Rich Christianson?
Good evening. I'm Rich Christianson. I live at 10 South Third Street. I'm a longtime downtown resident, longtime. Downtown parking. Where are all the racket scientists when you need them? Seriously, is it so complicated? And is it such a big problem? I don't think it is. I think there are two ways we can improve downtown parking. First, we can increase the number of parking spaces. Second, we can make better use of the parking spaces that we have. Depending on the type of parking, to make better use might mean that parking spaces are used by more vehicles throughout the day. Or, it might mean that parking spaces are used for more hours during a day. Improving downtown parking also requires a willingness to make changes, the right changes, of course. Doing nothing would be better than making the wrong choices when it comes to decisions about downtown parking. Action item A, downtown parking, actually contains five different items, and in this case, that is inappropriate. The reconfiguration of the Mineral Street lot needs to be separate. It has absolutely nothing to do with the other four items. The actual rebuild of that parking lot won't happen until May, so there is time for a second look and perhaps for a better design. Some people think that the Mineral Street lot becoming two separate lots and ten-foot parking spaces becoming nine-foot spaces is not an improvement. Action item B, Bailey Avenue is next on the agenda. It is easy to understand why that situation has developed. Eliminating overnight parking on that street is not a good solution. It would be better to make one small change that would improve things. And if that is not enough, make a second small change that would fix things. I guess my question is whether or not the proposed changes in action items A and B increase the number of parking spaces or make better use of the parking spaces that we have. There are three proposed changes in action item A that are relatively minor and are probably okay. But other included proposed changes seem to make downtown parking worse. I ask that the common council vote against both action item A and action item B. Over the last six months, the number of proposed changes for downtown parking has gone from six to four to eight, and now is at seven. Six of the seven are on the agenda. The proposed change that is missing is the biggest and most controversial. It appears city staff and the common council want to find a better time to vote on converting all the twenty-four-hour overnight parking to leased parking. There have been thirty-nine parking spaces available for lease for years. Thirty-nine parking spaces available for lease. The city's parking space fees account shows $2,640 collected in the first six months of this lease year. $2,640 collected. That calculates to less than eight parking spaces. Less than eight parking spaces. The numbers won't change much during the second half of the lease year. That means about thirty-one parking spaces are empty and no one can use them. Thirty-one parking spaces are empty. And the proposal is to eliminate all the twenty-four-hour overnight parking and add fifty-one parking spaces to the thirty-nine parking spaces already available for lease. How big a problem is downtown overnight parking? Exactly how many overnight parking spaces are there, and what is the estimate for how many are needed? With all the studies and committees over the years, shouldn't those two numbers be front and center? I don't think downtown overnight parking is such a big problem. I think it could probably be solved simply by making better use of the parking spaces that we have. Making one small change would reduce the downtown overnight parking problem. Making a second small change would probably solve the problem. Two small changes would probably solve the downtown overnight parking problem and fix the Bailey Avenue situation. But I think more can be done. My hope is that along with resident parking, both customer parking and employee parking can also be improved. And that is why I am instead making the following four suggestions. Suggestion one, leased parking should be discontinued. The downtown would immediately gain about thirty-one parking spaces. Suggestion two, customer parking should be two-hour parking, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Suggestion three, the Oak Street lot should be twenty-one spaces of two-hour parking, the Mineral Street lot should be forty-two spaces of all-day parking, and the post office lot should be fifty-one spaces of overnight parking. And suggestion four, a downtown parking map should be created. The three colors on the map would be red, two-hour parking, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., no parking, 3:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., green, all-day parking, no parking, 3:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., and blue, overnight parking, twenty-four-hour parking. I hope the common council can see that with suggestions one, two, and three, I have tried to increase the number of parking spaces and make better use of the parking spaces that we have. I'm not sure if any of the seven proposed changes really do that. I'm fairly sure that some of the proposed changes will make downtown parking worse. I hope the common council will take its time and carefully consider all its options. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the only individuals that have asked to speak on Ordinance A, and some of people touched on Ordinance B as well. So we're back to Ordinance A, the downtown parking. Counsel discussion on that.
I'll start. Rich, I agree with you. Item number one in this has nothing to do with Items 2, 3, 4, and 5. And so I would start by moving to table Item 1 to the next meeting when we could have a presentation on the Mineral Street Lot, and we could see how that reconfigures. So I make a motion to table the reconfiguration of the Mineral Street parking lot for more information and for more public input.
Second to motion.
A motion and a second. Nichols?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I haven't heard much discussion about 2, 3, 4, and 5. I, well, I will say this. I think it's very confusing to have three different designations for short-term parking. Five-minute here, 15-minute there, 30-minute here. So I really like the idea of making a consistent short-term parking time amount and a consistent time amount for, I guess, timed parking. Rich, you talked about two-hour parking. It wasn't that long ago that this council was approached with a letter from businesses on Main Street with a long list of signatures that requested the three-hour parking. So while you may, I really would hate to go against the three-hour that had been not only recommended, adopted, signs up, et cetera. So I really believe that we should consolidate the timed parking categories, that we should have a, the ones that are 5, 15, and 30 should just be one designation of 15-minute parking, and that all of these 2, 3, 4, all of those should be consolidated to three hours. So I, I do agree with Number 2. I certainly agree with Number 3, converting parking on the west side of this building from city business only to anybody can park there. I suspect most people do that anyway. I doubt very much whether we actually enforce city business-only parking, so probably what we would be doing if we adopted that would be to actually adopt the present practice. And converting the parking on East Mineral Street, I think that would be in front of Red and Debs, is that right? I'm trying to figure out where that is in my mind, to the same configuration as other places. I really haven't heard anybody speak against 2, 3, 4, and 5. So I'm in favor of all of those.
Other comments on 2, 3, 4, and 5? Motion. We tabled Number 1.
Will be approved. Now, see, we have ordinance.
They would, yes, and the enclosed ordinance would make the changes without Number 1, is that correct then?
Right.
That's correct. If you adopt the ordinance as written, that, that enables Items 2 through 5.
Okay, so I move we adopt the ordinance, amending the official traffic map, which will cover Items 2, 3, 4, and 5 on the front page.
Second. A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on any of those? Nichols?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stackhausen? Killian?
Yes.
Carries. All right. Thank you all for your comments. I think we need probably a little more time to study this. I think that's the feeling of the council, so we'll certainly.
I would, I, I know it's my problem, but I missed any presentation on this parking lot configuration. I heard Ken ask tonight for a map. I don't know, I probably was out of town when there was a presentation on the configuration. I would suggest that we, before, in the next month, schedule some kind of public presentation so that we can see what this is. I mean, I hear all about this from different aspects. I've read Mr. Old's letter about piling snow in places and fences. Nick, I've read that about fence, you know, I've read all of this stuff. I, you know, I will admit that I am unschooled enough on this to be able to adequately, I'm, I'm not informed enough.
All right. We will go on to Item B, which is ordinance amending the official traffic map for Bailey Avenue.
Yes. The Downtown Parking Task Force looked at the issue of Bailey Avenue from Pine Street to Mitchell Avenue, based primarily on complaints from, from owner-occupied residences there. They're concerned about the overnight parking that is keeping residential use and business customer use of street parking to a minimum on that street. So we're recommending that that initial block from Pine Street to Mitchell Avenue be designated as no parking 3:00 to 6:00 a.m.
Counsel discussion?
Well, we've been working on this, at least I've been bringing this up for about two years. And basically, it pertains to two houses that have their front doors on Bailey Avenue, and they have requested permit parking. And so no parking 3:00 to 6:00 a.m. really is not going to help them, because they want to have permit parking during the daytime so people can make use of the area next to their properties. And I brought up, from time to time, which I think is a compromise, which is to have permit parking in front of these two properties, because I don't find any discussion for the rest of the properties. So for just the two properties, which are closest to, what's that street, Mitchell Avenue, my compromise would be to just have permit parking there. And we could do that simply by signage. For example, on the west side, you could put a sign up that says, "Permit parking here at the corner," and it would take care of it. And on the east side would be a similar sign. And then you leave the rest of the street as is. You really wouldn't need no parking 3:00 to 6:00, as far as a limit. So that's my suggestion on this, this street. I think it's wrong to make it no parking 3:00 to 6:00. So if, when you do that, you take away spaces for downtown people and for the adjoining tenants if they have need for that space. So that's my recommendation on this.
The comments.
Well, my question to you, Ken, is how are you going to manage alternate-side parking for snow? And there are other streets in town that use the permit parking for their spots in front of their homes, especially Chestnut Street.
Okay.
So.
Alternate side, how's that handled?
There isn't very few people that.
Ask the chief.
Many students live on that street.
By asking?
Yes, she's asking the question, and you're policing it, so give us an answer.
We enforce permit parking in those areas, or the, in the permit zone?
Is it combining alternized, alternate-side parking and permit parking?
Depends on where you're talking in some areas.
Okay.
Some areas, there's only parking on one side of the street.
Yes.
It varies.
But they're narrows, but they're narrow streets. Chestnut Street is narrow on part of it, and then it's.
Parts are pretty wide, parts are narrow.
Your, your question is, there's permit parking on both sides, and there's alternate-side parking. Is that your question? What, what is done then?
In the winter?
Winter.
Then we go with the alternate side. But I mean, in the summer, when we're typically not enforcing a lot of the permit parking, because there are not many vehicles in that area at that time.
You enforce the alternate side in the winter?
Correct.
Okay.
From November 15th through April 15th.
Even though they suppose they could park on that side with permit parking?
With.
But the sign says on the permit parking sign, winter, winter ordinance in effect, something to that. Okay.
And that takes precedence.
All right. Other discussions, comments? Counsel interested in the proposal, which is to designate Bailey Avenue from Pine Street to Mitchell Avenue as no parking 3:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m.? Other option or no change at all? We discussed this last time. We did talk about the fact that, yes, indeed, that street, that block is heavily used during the day and probably overnight, from what I remember, Howard, from the counts that were done.
Yes. The, the street is parked full pretty much 24/7.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we take advantage of this, or do this, Ordinance Number 17, that we have no parking 3:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. on Bailey Avenue between Pine Street and Mitchell Avenue, and that the residents there take advantage of the permit parking that they can pick up at the police department.
There is no.
That is not in the permit parking.
That's not, okay, then. Eliminate the permit.
You're, you're saying your motion is to approve the no parking 3:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. on that area?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion? A second.
Does not help the people that want permit parking. It does not help the residents that may be coming from uptown to park there. Helps neither one.
Well, we'll see if this does help, Ken. It may not be permit parking, but it might be a first step that would alleviate some of the parking on that. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
A motion and a second?
She was asking who.
Oh, okay. We'll vote. Nichols?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Doss?
No.
Francis?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
No.
Carries. All right. On to Ordinance C, or, excuse me, Item C, Ordinance 1717, amending the official traffic map on East Madison Street. Howard?
Okay. Mountain View Park on the north side of East Madison Street, there's no curb and gutter along that side of the street, and currently, there are no parking restrictions on either side. So in the wintertime, vehicles are required to do alternate-side parking. When vehicles park on that north side, sometimes they park in the grassy areas, it becomes rutted and causes additional work for staff in the spring. Also, when the ground is saturated, anyone parking on that side also could cause rutting. Until such time as East Madison Street is reconstructed with curb and gutter, this problem will remain, and at this point, I do not see that being anywhere here, anywhere on the next five-to-10-year reconstruction cycle. So staff is proposing an ordinance designating no parking this side of the street from Broadway to Lincoln. The residential lots are on the south side. It seems to make more park, sense to park there and will not cause the rutting.
Questions on this East Madison Street request? A motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the East Madison Street official amendment. We'll vote. Nichols?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is Ordinance 1718, amending the official traffic map for Pioneer Road. Howard?
Yep. We've received citizen concerns regarding commuter and overnight parking on Pioneer Road, south of Southwest Road. We conducted a two-week survey, and it concluded that during the week that commuters and overnight parking filled the street nearly to the first driveway of residences. On weekends, the parking is significantly reduced. Citizen concerns included the late-night parking with noise and littering. There are concerns about Pioneer Road as a commuter route with increased traffic and excessive speeds. Residents are concerned about the effects of traffic on the safety in the neighborhood and on property values. Ready Drive is a similar case, however, that one is a lot closer to Roundtree Commons. There were concerns about overnight parking. But, so the council approved no parking 3:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. for Ready Drive from Chestnut Street to Cadillac Drive. If we impose a similar restriction for Pioneer Road, it would be more consistent for understanding and enforcement. Now, this would, this would discourage the late-night parking and reduce, if not eliminate, noise and littering. However, it will not change the use of the street for commuter parking.
All right. Any counsel comments? We do have three people who have asked. We definitely have one person who's asked to speak on this. All right. We'll have Scotty, is it? And Christine Wardle, whichever one.
Good evening. My name is Scotty Wardle, 605 Pioneer Road. Unfortunately, I was unable to make the previous meeting when this item was discussed. We were in Florida on family vacation. So in lieu of being present at those meetings, I wrote a two-page letter and sent it to Howard to express my concerns. A little bit of background information, I have paid university parking for 10 years. Okay? So I understand the many aspects of university parking. I was a resident hall, resident for three years, and an RA for two years. I was a hall director, required live-on position, paying parking at universities for another two years, and the spouse of Christine, live-on hall director when I was a working professional. So as a spouse, I was also paying for private parking. So for 10 years, I've paid part, private parking and university lot, so I understand a lot of the concerns that have come up. The proposed parking restrictions of 3 to 6 on Pioneer Road do not address the concerns of the residents. What it does is it eliminates part of the problem. It eliminates part of the problem where residence hall students are using our street as their permanent parking solution instead of university lots and buying a permit. And on a nightly basis, we know that at the bottom of the hill, our neighbors are seeing 15 to 20 cars permanently parked on the street, and our officers are ticketing a great many of those that are now have parking restrictions on every other. And you drive the street in the morning at 8:00 a.m., and you will see a series of tickets. So thank you for doing that. But what that has caused, now that it has hit November 15th, is that those cars have gone even further up the street, which is exacerbating the problem. So one issue is people that are using it instead of a university lot that are clearly living on campus, and then the other. And then the other issue that we see is about half of the cars, 15 to 20 per day, are commuters that are using our street for their permanent parking solution, or university employees that are using it instead of buying a permit. And so what is happening is on a daily basis, we are seeing at a minimum 15 cars overnight on the street, and upwards of 30 to 35 cars parking from the bottom of the street up. And they have now surpassed the first residence of Pioneer Road. Okay, so when the letter was written, they hadn't quite broached that, but now it has continually caught on. If you go out to Google Maps and do a street view, walk the street that Google has snapped. That street view was taken on September of 2013. And it's a beautiful September day, and you'll see about seven cars down there. And that was never a problem with seven cars down there because it hadn't broached the property line of the first two residents. But what has happened is either something has changed within the university, or word has caught on that you can use Pioneer Road as your private, as your personal parking spot, either as an employee, or as a resident, or as a commuter. And they continue to push further up the street. On Pioneer Road, we do not have any designated walking area. We do not have a sidewalk. So what happens is you have cars on both sides of the street, and you have a car going up and a vehicle going down. So Pioneer Road is part of the subdivision, and we're a very active subdivision. We have a lot of people that walk dogs, such as the residents that are here today. And unfortunately, our dog's not getting a walk right now because we're here. So we have dog walkers, we have people that are living in our neighborhood that are walking to the university as a commuter. And you have people going up and down the street on bikes. And we have nowhere to go but walk in the street, which is where the cars are. And you also compound that with a curve in the street. We have a downward grade with a curve in the street. And if anybody's ever driven that street in the winter, you will see skid marks into the residence at the bottom of the hill, toward the bottom of the hill. You will see people sliding in. The situation's only going to get worse. So the three to six parking restriction does not help the residents, it solves a part of the problem, but not all of the problem. When I wrote my letter, my letter of rec, request was two-hour parking restrictions from Vinegar Hill down to Southwest, which addresses that situation, and permit parking during that same stretch for the residents of that street, including myself and all of my neighbors. Because it is acceptable that we park our vehicles on the street. A vehicle here or there sporadically on the street is not a problem for anybody biking, walking, or driving. But when you have a line of cars at both sides of the street, it's very problematic. Okay? Um, I have, in preparation for this meeting, talked to numerous residents up and down the street. And we're all willing to go to the permit if we have to. But what the proposal is doing is it's going to eliminate our opportunity to park in front of our own houses, which is not the problem. So it forces down one problem and creates several other. So our recommendation is permit parking, no parking between the property line from 650, between the property line between 650 and 660 Pioneer Road, which is approximately the location of the fire, fire hydrant, which is at the top of the hill before the curb starts. So from that point through the curb to the bottom, two-hour parking, and upwards from there, permit parking for the residents. That solves our issue, that allows people to enjoy the university. They got some great trails down there. It allows people to park down there, enjoy the trails. If there are special events down there, such as cross-country, it allows people to use that parking space for those special events. Thank you.
You're recommending four-hour parking from two residences down to South...
Yes, sir. And, and permit parking from that point up to Vinegar Hill. Because our fear is if we do not go to permit parking, word has, word continuously spreads that you can park on Pioneer Road. Like I said, in September 2013, there were seven cars. And now on a daily basis, we're at the same 35 cars. So if we, if we just stop at that fire hydrant, they're just going to park further north. Thank you.
Thank you.
South.
That was the only person that asked to speak on this issue, so council discussion.
I have driven that road many times in the last two weeks, and I have seen exactly what you're talking about. And Mr. Chandler, you haven't spoken tonight, but I know that you have concerns about people turning around constantly in your driveway up and down the hill. Uh, I looked at the signs on Southwest Road today because there's a part of me that says we should have some consistency. And I believe that those signs on Southwest Road say permit parking or two-hour parking limit, which is what you've requested. I know that there's some reluctance on the council to extend permit parking, but I tend to agree with you that, and I also agree that if we don't go as far as Vinegar Hill, I think it's Vinegar Hill Road or Street, whatever, I don't know, it's Road or Street. I also believe if you only go like to the top of the hill, just past Stevens driveway, then the problem's just going to move up the hill. So I don't know what has led to this increase this year, if it's additional construction. But I certainly sympathize with you, and I believe matching what is on Southwest Road, because that's the majority of the people that are, um, the people that are parking on Pioneer Road are familiar with the signs on Southwest Road, so it's not a new designation for them. Um, I know you said permit parking only to the top of the hill, but it might as well just be permit parking, as far as I'm concerned. Permit parking and two-hour, that's my, I, I really believe that no overnight parking will not solve their problem.
That'd be up to the council chair.
Thank you for allowing me to come back up. I, I did want to make one additional comment. There were references made to Ready, and Ready is a, it's a comparison, yes, because it's in the same subdivision, and there's only two, three ways into our subdivision, and Ready is one of them. But Ready is a different animal because Ready does not have primary residence until you get significantly into the subdivision. Right now, the first five or six lots that are mapped out on the right-hand side of the street, there are no houses, and I don't know if there's any plans. So there are no residents there. And on the left-hand side of the street, there are very few residents that actually are budding up to the street where they would use the street for on-street parking as a primary residence. So Pioneer Road residents, we do use the street if we have an additional vehicle for overnight parking. That is the difference between us and Ready. Thank you.
Great, other comments?
I, I would make one additional comment. In the district I represent, which is West Main, that way, uh, there was a similar concern raised when we changed parking activities at the university. And the university now has university permit parking on Greenwood and on College Drive. And at that point in time, the people on Sunset Drive, which is a little cut-through street, came to me, and we, that's a permit parking. I actually went ba- went by there today because I was like, after going up and down this street two or three times, reading all this stuff, I'm like, th- there has to be a solution. And on that street, it's permit parking only. There is not even two-hour parking, it's permit parking only, winter rule, winter ordinances, or whatever it says. So part of my coming to this conclusion today was based on what has happened in the district that I represent. And while I don't directly represent the district that you live in, as a city councilman, I represent everyone too. And so I, that's, that's why I would favor your, your initial recommendation, permit parking, two-hour parking.
Comments?
Where does the permit, where does the permit come from?
Uh, the permit parking, people who have property, property owners. It's my understanding, if I recall permit parking right, is if I have a home on a street, and Ken probably can say this better than I can, because he actually lives in a permitted parking area. I believe you get two parking permits automatically for your street, and then you can go get more. But i- if you needed them, or if you had to hire a wo- or if a workman was coming or something, there's a way that a property owner then can get more. But the permits are not, they don't cost the resident anything, and they come to the resident from, I guess, the police department. Because I see Doug pointing at himself.
And there is a limit on the number that we do give out.
But it is true that if I were having, uh...
So much for short term, more so for if you had children living at home or that had additional vehicles.
Or, or, right.
If you have work people there.
Right.
We try and account for those things.
Right, so if I were having, you know, a room added on or something, and I had extra people there, I, and I only get two parking permits, but I could come to you and I could say, listen, for the next six weeks, I've got a contractor, and they're going to be bringing trailers and stuff. And then you would work with me.
We work with people.
For that, right.
Well, this is similar to Bailey Avenue.
So I'll make a motion that we adopt permit parking on Pioneer Road, from Pioneer Road to Vinegar, uh, I guess that would be going south from Southwest Road to Vinegar Hill Road, permit parking with the stipulation, permit parking or two-hour parking.
So you're saying from Southwest Road all the way to Vinegar Hill on both sides?
That's exactly right.
Your motion is permit or two?
Permit. And then it would say, or two-hour parking, right.
Two-hour parking, what hours?
Right, whatever these signs say. I think it's permit parking or two, I don't, I don't, I don't think they say two-hour parking from 9:30 to 2:00 or something.
There is one on, on, I think it's Roundtree, that says from 8:00 until 6:00. Two-hour parking from 8:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., and after that's permit only.
And that makes allowance for the commuters.
But it would be two-hour parking, excuse me, Ken, so that people would have to move their car after two hours, as opposed to parking there eight hours.
But you may, we had, the last time, a couple of weeks ago, somebody saying they might come in with equipment, work equipment, and park it overnight. So two-hour parking would cause, have to, they'd have to move it, right?
No, because they would have a permit, so they would be allowed to stay.
You're going to give them an hour?
Yes.
An hour, okay.
And again, the question is, in your motion, do you want to restrict the parking, two-hour parking from 8:00 until 6:00?
I, we do have the hours on other signs in, in the district. I don't recall what the, what the hours are. But they, they are during the daytime, uh, two-hour parking during the daytime hours, 8:00 until 5:00, or, or something along those lines, Monday through Friday, is what it says. Permit parking or the two-hour parking.
I would suggest that they match whatever is currently on Southwest Road. I did not take, take time today to turn around and take a picture of that sign. I took a picture of many signs, but unfortunately, not that sign. So if anybody wants signed pictures, I have plenty on my phone.
So you made a motion, did you?
I made a motion.
Anybody second that motion?
Is anybody seconding my motion for permit parking and two-hour parking?
No, there is not a second, I'm looking for a second.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, wait, now I have a second. Is there any other council discussion on permit parking and...
Two-hour parking is not enough. There's no way a student can walk all the way from down the hall down to Pioneer Road and turn a car around and get back to class.
I think you're correct, Barb, and I think the hope is that they will pay the permit and park on campus.
So you're forcing them to Ready Drive?
Well, Ready Drive would also have restrictions.
Is that what we're saying as well?
That is already in effect. Ready Drive's restrictions are already in effect.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it just says it's not available three to six. No parking three to six in the morning.
Park there all day.
They can park there all day.
And I think what we found is that so far is geographically too far for people to walk.
No, we'll find out, right?
Anybody know how much it costs for a student parking permit on campus? Do you know?
Around $200 for the year. Little bit less for commuter.
Any other discussion on the motion? And we'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
No.
Stockhausen?
No.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we're going on to contract 1718A, ADA paratransit taxi.
Yes. As part of the issues with our ADA tran- ADA plan, our taxi service is now considered the ADA paratransit service. And so we solicited for contract 18-17A for this service. There was one proposal presented to us. The evaluation committee reviewed the qualitative merits and recommends approval of this contract to Running Incorporated, the same people who are doing the service right now, for the initial cost of $29.76 per service hour in 2018. It is up from the other price. Just so that you understand, the request for proposals did allow for a increase in service hours from a base amount of 12,750 to as many as 14,000, subject to the budget. Uh, the Platteville Public Transportation Committee reviewed and forwarded, and is forwarding a recommendation of approval of this contract as well. We would be locked into a two-year contract for calendar years 2018 and 2019, and have the potential for three option years.
Questions, anyone?
I make a motion, we accord, uh, award contract 1817B.
A.
Oh, 17A, pardon me, that's for the taxi.
A second? Motion is second to approve this request. We'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Carries.
Next is contract 1718B, fixed route for the bus.
Yes. We also needed to do a proposals for our bus route. One proposal from Russ Stratton Buses was accepted. The same evaluation committee also reviewed the qualitative merits and recommends approval to Russ Stratton Buses for the initial cost of $37.93 per service hour in 2018. This is down from the current price. The request for proposals also allowed for a variation in service hours from the base amount of $7,093 to as many as 9,000, subject to the budget. Additionally, when we were doing this request for proposal, we were discussing the possibility of getting grants for replacement buses. Should the city get the grants, and should the city and the university come to an agreement on providing the local match for those, the prices would drop per service hour based on the number of buses that, that we were to get through the grant funding. The Public Transportation Committee al- also reviewed this and also recommend approval to, for Russ Stratton Buses. and also recommend approval to, for Russ Stratton Buses.
Comments, anyone?
I, I do have a question, and the question is, have we had a discussion about, with the university about bus purchases? What's the status of that conversation?
I've begun that conversation with Amy, and I'm not sure where it needs to go from there. I'm working with her on, on that. I'm not sure when we will know whether we have the grants. I was told that it would be December or January by the time we get that. I've also talked with her about, I believe you had the thought of creating a sinking fund, or replacement fund, if you will, for future replacements. That's, we've discussed that, I've discussed that with her, and I'm working with her to, to discuss it with whoever needs to do so.
We do have one person, Rich Christensen, who's asked to speak for information.
I'm Rich Christensen, and I live at 10 South Third Street. There's too much bus service. There's not enough demand. Changes need to be made. The right time to make changes is May 2018. The city's takeover from the university and the expansion of the bus service took place in May of 2015. It's been two and a half years. The common council needs to look at the numbers. First, I would think the common council would find it unacceptable that there are numbers in the staff report and fiscal note for tonight's meeting that were not provided two weeks ago when it was on the agenda for information discussion. There was a single number, $5,000, in the November 28 staff report. Now there are 10 numbers. Second, I'm wondering if the Platteville Public Transportation Committee has shared these two tables with the common council, especially the second table, which summarizes the six bus routes for 2016. It shows that the orange bus, bus route accounted for 78.4% of all bus rides and provided 24 rides per hour. And it shows that the other five bus routes provided from three rides per hour to less than one ride per hour, and crossed from $13.53 per ride to more than $40 per ride. So there are bus routes that simply don't work. They don't provide enough rides. They cost too much. I don't know why the city would even consider being locked into 7,093 bus service hours. The city's bus service costs about $300,000 per year. It is enlightening to break down some numbers between university students and the general public. For 2016, university students paid for about 47% of the cost of bus service and received about 93% of the bus rides. The general public paid 53% of the cost and received 7% of the rides. That calculates to $39.42 per bus ride for the general public. On Thursday, Howard Crowfoot told the Platteville Public Transportation Committee that the number of bus rides overall in 2017 are on pace to be 8% higher than in 2016. But the way he said it, and the way he repeated it, made me think he wasn't telling the whole story. And it looks like the number of bus rides for the general public in 2017 are on pace to be 12% lower than in 2016. I'll leave it to the common council to determine which number is more important. To summarize, I hope the common council will look at the numbers. I hope that will happen next month when most of the 2017 information should be available. I hope the common council will not lock the city into a two-year contract tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, we have Contract 1718B, fixed route. I've heard the presentation. Approve or not approve?
I move we approve Contract 1817B for public, for bus, fixed bus route transportation.
Second?
Second.
Second. We'll vote.
Are these, Mr. Christensen brings up these points. Are these points correct?
Which exactly are you referring to?
The percentage that public is using of the buses and the cost per ride?
I consider university students members of the public. Mr. Christensen's numbers specifically exclude university students as members of the public. When he speaks about taxpayers, he's talking about federal and state taxpayers, which we are all a part of. But the amount of money coming from city tax dollars toward the bus service is zero. Actually, the amount of local match that the university provides to the city helps subsidize the local match for the taxi system. If we did not have that partnership, city taxpayers would have to pay roughly $70,000 in local match towards, towards the taxi versus the roughly $40,000 that we pay now. We have, we have over 54,000, we had over 54,000 riders use the bus in 2016, and the, the majority of them, about 93%, were university students. In 2017, year-to-date, we have over 51,000 riders, and roughly 5, roughly 93, 94% are university riders. That was what I was saying in the committee meeting when we were on pace to have more ridership in 2017 than we did in 2016. I did not provide any breakout to the committee regarding the proportion of, of student riders versus non-student riders, whether they were, whether it was higher or lower. I would have to review the numbers. I, I'm assuming that Mr. Christensen did the, did the math on that.
We'll get, get the numbers final after December.
Yes, we, we would get...
We can, we can study it more.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and we'll vote. Nichols?
Yes.
Westeby? Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is award alternate bid one, building demolition for former Pioneer Ford redevelopment project. Joe?
Yes, the city has been working through the, the steps required in the memorandum of agreement regarding the Pioneer Ford redevelopment project, specifically the former Gates Hotel building. Most recently, we made the building available to anybody who was interested in relocating it. We got no proposals. So the next step was to document the structure, which has been completed. And so the next action required by the council is to move demolition of, of that structure. We had previously accepted bids for that project, delaying this particular building demolition. But the low bidder on that was Rural Excavating with a bid of $22,500. You've noticed that they've already started work on the other buildings. Been going according to plan, so recommend awarding alternate bid one to Rural Excavating at a price of $22,500. Any questions?
I believe Gary brought up about the point that the developer would be taking away something which is of historic significance, and that this has to be done before he signs the agreement to purchase the whole property. Is that correct?
It's a requirement of the development agreement that the city completes a site clearance prior to them buying the property.
And what I brought up in the past is that, that the developer could walk away from this whole project without any penalty. According to what this city attorney has agreed as in a development agreement, correct?
Before the property's purchased.
Yes, if he faults, whatever you want to use for a word, he could walk away. So what Gary is saying, that we've lost the property then, there's no going back for any future developer beyond, beyond General Capital Group. That's the sad part of this situation. Then there are things I think about this as far as this project, in particular the Gates. I've said this before, that General Capital Group came in here, they gave us a proposal April 2016, saying they were going to restore, redevelop the Gates Hotel, and it sounded good. But then seven months later, they said it's too expensive. Do it. And to me, what is that? Is that incompetence, that they didn't learn right away, study right away? The cost that it would take to store it? Or does it mean it's bait and switch? Talk about doing something. We've had that happen before in Platteville. Bait and switch. I would say, as another example of bait and switch, is the police station. I remember helping select the architect for the police station. What we got is something very different. Had a meeting with the architect, and Joe was there. He was sitting back there, and he wasn't going to change much. To me, that's an example of bait and switch. In a way, another one is performance. Company says they're going to do certain performance, and they come in, do their work, and it's substandard work. Do one thing, we get something else. Anyway, those are my comments. I think, I think the General Capital Group has not held in good faith. At least could have left somebody else develop the Gates Hotel. Parking spaces, they were initially asking only for 71. So they used the argument that, well, we need more spaces, we'll take it from...
Other comments? I would note that the Plan Commission was the first entity, Ken, to suggest that perhaps the Gates Hotel was as parking. So it wasn't General Capital that came to the city first and said, that makes good sense from traffic flow. And they did seriously look at the building again. They did not commit, the first time they looked at it seriously again, and said for $180,000 or $200,000 more, if the city wanted to invest that, then we could make this, we could renovate it and make it apartment building. And obviously, the city, at that point, was not interested in going forward. So I appreciate your comments, but I think we've, we've talked about this, and I have one view of how the situation has transpired. I have another. Are there any other comments about this?
Well, the, the Plan Commission, that commission was fed information which was incorrect. They didn't, they didn't know the, the quality of the... Spoken of as something that's sound, and that information was incorrect.
Ken, I think we've been... Okay, your viewpoint. We have a need to... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm supposed to speak into the microphone. Okay, so, we're asking to approve the alternate bid for the demolition of the former Gates Hotel.
I make a motion to award alternate bid one for the demolition of the former K- Hotel building to Rural Excavation. $1,500.
Second? Second.
Motion is second, and we'll vote. Nichols?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
No.
Carries. Right, under information discussion, we have resolution updating the fee schedule.
Take this one. Annually, staff reviews the fees charged by the city of Platteville for various licenses, permits, et cetera, and has suggested the following changes to the current fee schedule. Adding the annual alcohol license renew, renewal late license fee. I'm sorry, that probably came out completely wrong. We included the museum fees, they weren't included before. Increased some fees in the cemetery. Deleted the reference to the senior center rental fees. Added some campground fees, or added to the campground fees. Diamond Field Court fees. That was a, if you have any questions on that, Luke can answer, answer those. With the Family Aquatic Center, consolidated pool rentals. And the police department, just differentiated between fees with CDs, with pictures and video, and with public works. Increased curb cut fees, and increased recycling bins by $1, and increased administrative fees by $10.
Questions, anyone? All right, next is second amended and restated real estate note for Roundtree Hall Associates.
This is the initial draft of the amended note for the Roundtree Hall debt. It extends the payment period out until July 7, 2028. It includes, on the, on or about the date of its execution, a payment to the city of $200,000, which reduces the principal amount of the note from $896 to $696, 696,000. That amount is paid to the city through a schedule that's set forth in the note if the property is sold during the 10-year period between 2018 and 2028. That note is paid off first, the sum of $305,400 would be paid after the first mortgage loan between Roundtree Hall Associates and their lender is paid. And that amount would be not more than $796,228 at this point. And then the city would be, would be paid to $305,400. And then at that point, there would be a 60-40 split between the city and the developer, to the point where the city is paid, the city's note is paid in full, and thereafter, the city and the developer would split 50-50 the remaining sale proceeds. That, that's the formula that would be followed if a sale of the property occurs within 10 years. And thereafter, if the property does not sell within 10 years, then the city would have the right to have the property sold or request that the city be paid all of its note. Or if it couldn't be paid all of its note, then 50%, then the city's note would be paid, and then the city would divide 50-50 the proceeds from, based upon the fair market value of the property. And so I, I think I've got that a little bit confused. If it's not sold prior to July 7, then the, then Roundtree Hall Associates is obligated to pay the city an amount equal to the total outstanding indebtedness evidenced by this note, plus 50% of the fair market value of the property, after deduction of the first mortgage note and the total amount owed to the city. And there's a formula for having appraisals done of the property. And there's a formula for having appraisals done of the property to determine what the the total amount of the fifty fifty split would be.
Questions, anyone?
Three is with a thousand dollars will go.
We are two. It's ultimately a council decision.
Oh.
All right, so once we get that money, we'll have to have a discussion. All right.
And I guess I would just know that this is Brian's last meeting, and he's the most knowledgeable about this topic, so now would be the time to ask questions. Or if you want to email us questions, we can take advantage of him during his last few days.
All right. Next item is a conditional use permit for a daycare at two eighty-five Richard Street.
Yes, the applicant has made an offer to purchase property at two eighty-five Richard Street. It's currently a vacant single-family home, but they would like to use that as a daycare. That use at that location would require a conditional use permit. Initially, the daycare would provide care for up to thirty children. It'd have three full-time people and two part-time people. Really, there's primarily some interior modifications that would be required. The only exterior change would be fenced in rear yard to allow a play area that meets the requirements for a daycare. Long-term, they they would like to also basically renovate the garage space, which would allow additional capacity with up to forty-five children. That went forward, they would hire have to hire two additional employees. Basically, it's just five through the AM to six PM hours. There's no overnight point, and they don't really anticipate doing that. If you're familiar with that property, it would be just up the hill from the former McDonald's property, so it's adjacent to commercial property and multifamily property on three sides. So it does seem to be an appropriate use for occupation, and staff would recommend approval.
And the Plan Commission has?
The Plan Commission has not reviewed this yet. That'll be at their next meeting, but the recommendation before the council takes action.
And can you tell, so this would no longer be a residence, then it would be turned, so it's not a residence in or a daycare in someone's residence, it's a daycare?
Correct, correct.
So it'd be simply a daycare?
It would not be a home occupation, it would just be a daycare.
Question, does the city or is it the state have the requirements as far as the number of children they can put into this location?
This this facility would be licensed through the state, and they would have to meet all the state requirements.
Of the state?
Correct.
Forty-five, because I I go by the property often and on the edge of the hillside there, next to the edge of the hillside, and forty-five seems like a lot of children to put in.
Yeah, the the number, she had given me that number prior to having the inspector come and look at the property. They had, she called it a pre-licensing inspection.
On a corner, so.
So that number may not be that high after they.
We wouldn't want to have anything on the corner blocking vision as far as fencing and so forth. And across the street diagonally is another small, it's a small daycare center across the street. I don't know the number they have, but I suspect it isn't over.
Yeah, I believe that one is a residence.
Pardon?
It's a daycare in the person's residence, so the the numbers are lower. Correct.
Who has, have one person who's asked to speak? Jackson, is it?
Thank you for your time and for giving me this opportunity to present my points tonight. I'm here to talk to about two eighty-five Richard Street. The first thing that I want to point out about the property is that there is an insignificant amount of parking there. There's a two.
Where do you live?
Oh, sorry, I live over on two seventy-five North Water Street, but I do drive across by the property quite frequently. There's just inadequate parking outside of the garage. There's only two off-street parking spots as of right now. My biggest concern is if you have thirty kids coming in there from six o'clock in the morning and getting picked up before, you know, between the hours of five and six. It presents a huge liability for those children walking up and down the street there, because there is no sidewalk on that street. And then there also is no streetlights there as well. Like I said, it just creates a huge liability, and if you have thirty to forty-five cars coming in there day and night to pick up their kids, I think that there at least needs to be a traffic study done.
What was your name?
Jackson.
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 Jackson Pellet.
Thank you, Jackson. Any other comments from the council?
Well, I I would agree that basically the only street they can really park on easily is Richard Street. At the staley, and that's a busy, busy street. You go across staley to the other side of Richard, that is not a good location, because you have to cross cross staley, and that's busy. Then when you go down the hill, that area is unmarked as far as any parking, and I noticed that typically ten to eleven to as many as twelve cars park on that area. I don't know who they belong to, whether they come from Roundtree Commons or whether they come from the motel, not the motel, Oakley complex down below. So that's area is unavailable daily. So Richard Street's pretty much is it as far as Richard and going toward the park. Busy.
Other comments? Right, that's the last item. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I I did, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but I'm hoping that in addition to a discussion about the parking lot on Mineral Street that we have, the discussion we need to have on leased parking.
Leased parking, okay.
Well, I also want to review a daycare. I use daycare, ten hours a day, six years for my child in a group setting like this, small group setting like this, and I would like to see the council think about that when they review a daycare in the home, well, in a facility like that.
Right. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, and we'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.